This evening, we have a couple of presentations. And one is proclamation declaring the month of May as Clean Air Month. And is there someone here to receive this? Great. And you know, this has a particularly special meaning for me because I am the Center City's representative to the Monterey Bay Air Quality Control Board. And so, I think what I'm -- I'm gonna come down here. And why don't you come up here with me and we'll face the camera, which is right there. I'll read the proclamation. This is City of Capitola's mayor proclamation. And you're from the air board?
Yes, my name is David Frisby. I'm a planner at the Air Pollution Control District.
Well, thank you, David, for being here to receive this proclamation. And this is the mayor's proclamation designating the month of May 2014 as Clean Air Month. Whereas the month of May is designated as Clean Air Month designed to raise public awareness about the need for every Californian to work to reduce air pollution. And whereas Americans across the country and here in Capitola are working hard to help limit the pollutants that cause climate change and reduce their impact on the environment. And whereas clean air is vital, important to our health, environment, and economy. And whereas due to longer days and warmer temperatures, the month of May is typically the start of the area's ozone season. And particulate matter, air pollution, especially fine particles can be inhaled deeply into the lungs and cause serious damage, including asthma attacks, respiratory illness, and premature death. And exposure to diesel exhaust from vehicles and equipment can cause adverse health effects ranging from respiratory irritation to cancer. And small changes in our daily lives can have a big impact on our environment. We can walk, bike, use public transportation, buy products with less packaging, recycle, reuse paper, plastic, glass, and aluminum. We can choose energy-efficient products, turning lights off, unplugging appliances, and cutting back on heating and air conditioning. And along with the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control Board, Capitola's commitment to environmental protection and public health results in some of the cleanest air in the nation. And increased public awareness efforts during the month of May and throughout the year will promote actions by Capitola citizens and businesses that will help keep the air clean. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Capitola recognizes May 2014 as Clean Air Month and encourage all citizens in joining the effort to live and work in ways that will ensure cleaner air and better health for all our community. So, I'm gonna hand you the proclamation, David. And thank you for your work and all the work of the air board staff from, you know, Richard Stedman on down for the things that you do to help keep our air clean. So, thank you. Did you wanna say?
Very much. I have other things to say, yes?
Great. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor and Honorable City Council. My name is Dave Frisby. I'm a planner at the Air Pollution Control District. Can I stand over here?
Yeah. But if you face that way, you'll be looking at me.
Spring is the beginning of our ozone season. And each year, the district takes time in May to especially recognize the importance of maintaining good air quality. However, we have serious air quality problems during the winter months as well due to the impacts of wood smoke and outdoor burning. So, at the air district, every month is Clean Air Month. It's important to recognize that an action that each of us takes not only affects our friends and neighbors in our community, but regionally and even globally. Our daily choices can truly make a difference. If you see air quality issues out there that need to be addressed, please remember that the air district is only a phone call away. You can also find tips and tools on our website at montereybaycleaneair.org. I also want to thank the city of Capitola for being part of the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District. Your city is well represented on the air district board by Mayor Story. We appreciate his insight and thoughtful leadership. It is both a pleasure and an honor to receive this resolution on behalf of the air district. Thank you for adopting this resolution to show the city's commitment to support air quality.
Thank you again, David. And thanks for being here this evening to recognize May as Clean Air Month.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have a presentation by our own Ron Graves, former mayor, former city council member, and current planning commissioner. And our current city representative on the Santa Cruz County Metropolitan Transit District. And here, and Ron is here to introduce a very special person to us this evening. And I won't steal your thunder, Ron.
Well, Mayor Story and members of the council, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the new CEO, General Manager of Metro, Alex. Here, comes to us from Chicago, but he is a native of California and has worked here for a number of years in the past. Alex would like to say a few words, I'm sure, his last name is Clifford. I'm sure he's going to be a great new leader for Metro. Alex?
Thank you, Ron. Honorable mayor and council members, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. It's been a great time. This is such a wonderful place, and it's truly an honor to be here to serve your communities in the county of Santa Cruz. I look forward to bringing sort of my 22 years of experience to Santa Cruz Metro. And we'll see what good things we can do. Certainly, I'm trying to fill very big shoes. Les has done such a fabulous job, and he's been here for, I think, 18 years, which is just phenomenal in this business. And I know you're proud of him, I'm proud of him. And I think all of the kudos that have been given to him over the last couple of weeks are well deserved. He's a fabulous guy. As I said, in Watsonville, you couldn't tell by looking at his feet that he left behind such large shoes. And I'll do the best I can do to really bring good things to your county. I've had a great chance to visit your community several times now and spend a few tax dollars as I'm getting adjusted and settled in. And it's a very beautiful community. I've had a chance to visit the Capitola Mall and certainly take a look at our transit hub over there. And I'll look forward to working with you and certainly with your city manager to understand what your interests are and to see how Metro can better serve you. So, with all of that, I'm thankful to be here and thank you for the opportunity to say a couple of words. Look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you, Alex, for, well, first of all, yeah. Thanks for coming this evening. Thank you, Ron, for bringing Alex. Thank you also, Ron, for your service on the metro board. And it looks like you have some more things to say.
I do. I watched your council meeting a time or two ago, and there were some questions raised with regards to Metro. It has been my pleasure over the years to serve with all the general managers that Metro has had. I'm one of the few board members that can say that. That just tells you how old I am. With regards to your award that you just made with regards to the ozone, one of the things, of course, that Metro's trying to do is to get rid of a diesel fleet and go to compressed natural gas, also looking at the future for electric vehicles and things of that nature. So, we're not sitting still. But the questions raised at a previous meeting have led me to, first of all, thank the council for the proclamation that they gave to Les White at his retirement party. And it was a pleasure to go with Stephanie Harland, one of your council members, who made the presentation. So, I thank you for that. What the board of directors of the transit district has been doing the last few months is obviously searching for a candidate for the general manager's position. Construction is underway on River Street for the new operations building. That's all the work that's going on adjacent to the San Lorenzo River up by Vernon Street and in that general area. Thank God, all the pile driving is done, so the neighbors aren't complaining. We have, as everybody did and experienced in 2008, some meager years with not only our sales tax revenue, but money in general coming from every source, whether it be state, federal, and the rest of it. During that period of time, we had some pullback of services. I'm happy to announce that we're back to almost the level we were prior to that, 2007. What has just most recently gone on at Metro is the summer bid package is out now. And what, for those of you who don't know what the summer bid package is, that major ridership goes away from UCSC and Cabrillo College. So, routes have to be reconfigured and certainly amended. Also with that, we have the traffic problems that are directly attributable to the tourist industry and the boardwalk area and the beach area. So, rerouting is occurring there. We're at the present time, as a board directing staff of the transit district, looking at revitalizing the transit center on Pacific Avenue in Santa Cruz and the transit center in Watsonville. And the final idea that I'd like to give you is, some months ago, your city manager approached me with the idea of looking at our transit center at the mall for possible relocation, or at least a study to do that work. We have, I, at one time, went to Les White and said, "I'd like to see us as a board do that." I met some opposition from other board members, but Les nevertheless entertained the idea of doing it. And then, all of a sudden, the mall associates couldn't make up their minds, so we kind of pulled back into a shell. I received two weeks ago a message, though, from your city manager. And he encourages me to bring this item again, and I've already brought it to Mr. Clifford's attention, that money is available for at least a study. If nothing else, we need to enhance and upgrade the facility where it is today. So, let's all keep an open mind on what can happen out there. But we certainly can make it better for riders, pedestrian, and the traffic getting to the mall. And I thank you for the time tonight. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Other questions? Yes, Dennis?
Thank you, Ron, for, Alex, for coming this evening. A couple different things. One is that the mall, really, even though it's a transit center in the center of the county, really doesn't serve the people that live in Capitola. If you take a bus from Capitola Village and you go to downtown Santa Cruz, it takes you 45 minutes because you transfer through the mall. There's only, that's the only way you can go. So, it's a significant handicap to get people to commute by bus if you have no consistency of ridership, but also taking that amount of time to travel such a short distance. Now, we get, in one of the highest density urban areas in the county, Capitola Village, we get one bus an hour. We have transfer through to Cabrillo College. You can take it on through to Cabrillo College from here. But again, you wait in the village. And so, the frequency of a bus service, it seems to me, is important in actually accumulating ridership. So, it's difficult to measure how much ridership you would have if you had a regular bus service. And watching the Metro through the years, and I'm a critical, because I'm a big supporter of yours, is that the majority of the bus service goes to where there is ridership. In other words, it's already proven that. UCSC, the express buses, have doubled, tripled in sizes, while Capitola has seen very, very little increase in service in the last 10, 15 years. In fact, it may have a decrease in service. We need bus service that services the people within our community that goes to particularly, particularly downtown Santa Cruz. And one possible solution to that would be, is to establish of an express line that goes from, for instance, from Capitola Village to downtown Santa Cruz in both directions that goes down a straight line, which is Portola Drive, where you don't have to go through the mall. You could easily make it in that destination within 20, 25 minutes in that period. You would pick up everyone through Live Oak. It's a center point in Live Oak on Portola Drive. And you'd have definite destinations on both ends. It could be as successful as the Watsonville bus, not to compare it with Over the Hill bus, 17 bus, which is very successful. You couldn't imagine that kind of ridership. But Capitola, if you look at the financing of the Metro, Capitola furnishes the Metro, 20% of its sales tax comes from the city. But it gets very little bus service besides what goes through the mall. And again, the mall doesn't serve, doesn't serve the people who live here. So, what I'm asking for, or what I'm proposing is that for the Metro to look at the possibility of giving us express service to get you to downtown Santa Cruz, or gets the people from downtown Santa Cruz to Capitola, and gives us an alternative to the automobile, or even, say, the bicycle in making that route. Fundamentally, the road is there. We deserve to have as much service in Capitola and OutToss as downtown Santa Cruz does. Santa Cruz, downtown Santa Cruz, and UCSC get the majority of the service. There's no question about that. So, just some thought on some future expansion. And also, we deserve as a community to have our share of bus service here.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Other council members have?
Let me make a comment quickly. Dennis, you're teaching to the choir boy, because I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's interesting to note that this book contains all the routes for the transit district at present. Of course, it'll change with the new summer bids and the rest of it. But I agree with you, we need to look at that. The obvious answer to all our dilemmas would be somehow there's a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. But I still think we need to look. And 20% is a very good pot of gold. And I think you brought it to our attention tonight at a very good time with the new general manager here, and I'm sure he absorbed every minute of it. And I thank you for that, Dennis.
Thank you, Ron.
All right. So, seeing no other questions from other council members, I'll thank Ron once again. It's good to see you. I hope you're doing very well. Alex, thank you for coming, and we look forward to achieving a robust transit system here in Capitola and working with you in the future to accomplish that. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Story. This evening's closed session, the council conducted a performance evaluation of the city attorney and his office. And the council took no reportable action concerning that matter in closed session. And the council also had a discussion with the city manager and the city attorney with regard to ongoing discussions with the school district pertaining to the lease for the Jade Street Community Center and the new Brighton Gymnasium. And the council gave us directions with regard to those negotiations, but took no reportable action in closed session. And that's the end of my oral report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next on the agenda is additional materials. I will report that we have several emails at the dais here. And there are emails from Supervisor Zach Friend, from Emily and Rick Martin, from Sean Tuttman, from Kristy Hadlin, from McRuth, from Molly Grassley, Marie Martorella, and finally from Tricia Proctor. They all seem to be concerning the agenda item this evening concerning the fireworks, which we'll be getting to shortly. And those, the only additional materials. Next, we come to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there staff, do we have any additions or deletions? Seeing none, council members, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as it's posted. Next is public comments, opportunities for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Yeah, please come up and speak to us.
I'm Al Carlson, and I'm your representative on the senior council, and thanks to Stephanie, that's how I got there. And it's more than Clean Air Week or Month. This is the senior month. It was designated in 1963 by President Kennedy, and in 1980, President Carter made it an official month for seniors. One of the things that most even know, the senior program, we got a lot of programs like Meals and Wheels and Project Scout, on and on and on. And so, you know, this community is well representative in the senior thing. One of the things we really like to point out during this month is the fact that thousands of seniors die every year because of home accidents, ladders, other issues in a home, and millions go to the emergency room. And things like, Michael, understand this, things like a stairway with only one light switch. I mean, I, you know, the old code, probably, that's the way it was. Grab bars, ladders, steps. And so, these things really cause a lot of senior injuries, and we like to point this out. One of the programs, probably not known as well, we have a home repair program for low-income people with volunteers. They'll go out to your house and put in grab bars, fix stairs, maybe fix a light switch. And I can give you the number for that. It's 831-427-5070. And they will go out to your house and do a lot of repairs for senior citizens. The senior network most of you familiar with, and I'll give you that number, is 831-462-1433. And they can inform you of all the programs that we have. So, anyway, I just want you to realize that Capitola could designate this senior month. Thank you.
Yes, Mike?
Al, that first number that you gave, can you dial that number to volunteer to do repairs?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a separate number from the, but it's part of the whole organization.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Al, for coming and informing us about May being also senior month, and for your service in representing Capitola on the senior council. Anyone else would like to address the council? Seeing none, yes, ma'am. Come right up to the, come up to the microphone, so you can.
I applied to be on the library ad hoc committee, and I'm not sure if it's, I should talk to you now about it, or whether it's going to be an agenda item and I can?
It is an agenda item. It's item number eight.
Okay.
And so, we'll be getting to it in just, well, two items from now.
Okay. So, I should talk then, right?
What is your name?
My name is Sandra Sandoval.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yeah. Anyone else would like to speak on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comments portion of the meeting this evening, and we'll move on to city council, city treasurer, and staff comments. We'll start with staff comments. Seeing none, and we'll, and I noticed that the city treasurer is not here. And so, we'll go to council comments. Any comments? Yes, Mike?
Yes. I will get another opportunity, because this is the last regular council meeting before the Hot Rod Car Show, June 7th and 8th, taking place on the Espinade. I'm sure everyone who lives around here will know when it takes place. Pretty much occupies the whole town, and it's a great time, whether you're into cars or not, just to walk on down through the Espinade.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Yes? Okay. Seeing no other comments, and now, which brings us to boards, commissions, and committee appointments. Tonight, we have before us the consideration of appointments to the library ad hoc committee. And why don't we begin with a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a very short presentation for you on this. You recall that the library ad hoc committee was formed earlier this year. There was no established membership number at the time. The last meeting where we discussed this on April 24th, the city council appointed Susan Westman and asked the committee to make a recommendation to, back to it, about an ideal committee size. There are currently seven appointed members to the committee, and the committee suggested that between seven and nine appeared to be the right number for the overall committee size. Before you, you have four applicants who have applied to be on the library ad hoc committee available for questions.
Okay. Other questions? And seeing none, and before, why don't we start with public comments? And Ms. Sandoval, maybe this would be the opportunity for, and appropriate time for you to come up and address the council on your application.
I live fairly near to the current library, and I've observed it, going, walking past it practically every day. It's an extremely well-used library. And adjacent to the tot lot, children will go in and out of the library. And I feel that the, I feel that that's an important element to the library experience, to have children be near the library. So, apart from that, I feel I'm well qualified to be on the ad hoc committee. I have a degree in English. I'm an avid reader. I'm very concerned with libraries and bringing the written word to children, kids, and having access to other media. The library is extremely well-used with the.
It's oftentimes our backyard, considering our actual backyard, our home is quite small. We've used the tot lot for five years now. And I just really enjoyed the experience of the library. So, being a neighbor, so just wanted to introduce myself to the council and staff here. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you both for coming up, and it's a pleasure to meet you. And thanks for speaking to your application as well. Is anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone and bring it back to council for discussion and possible action. And it seems like maybe we need to do, one, a couple of things, is determine the size of the committee. And then, the second step would be then determining of the four applicants which ones may fit into the available slots. So, maybe could we, maybe discuss what the feeling is among the council members on the size of the committee? And Mike, I know you, you're on the committee.
As is Dennis.
As well as Dennis, and maybe I'll let you guys lead us in that discussion.
There was some discussion, and I think that I would move that the council go along with the recommendation from the ad hoc committee to make it a nine-person committee, which means we require to choose, select two additional members.
Is it possible to have two alternates on this? If that person's not gonna show up, that we could appoint two people as alternates? Consistently, there's somebody blocking on. Can we do that, Jamie?
I think I wouldn't recommend it, just simply because for continuity of membership and in terms of the process, this isn't intended to be a particularly long-standing group. And I think if people can't make a lot of meetings, I'd hate to have somebody else stepping in and making a vote when they hadn't necessarily participated up to that point.
And there are public meetings, and we encourage everyone, all applicants, whether they're chosen or not, we have many people who come to this meeting regularly who aren't even members of the committee. So, it's pretty much an open.
But we also need to advertise it, make people feel welcome, and, you know, and put the notices up and things like that. Encourage people to come.
Can I just add one thing in here, is that geographically, we have a large membership in our library system and used by people from SoCal. There is one applicant in here from SoCal on this application. I think it'd be good to have a representative from that. It certainly would be good to have a representative from the apparent adjacent neighborhood, which seems like three of them are. Three of the applicants are from that adjacent neighborhood.
Rebecca Waller was one of, gonna be one of my choices.
Yeah.
Particularly for that reason, that we have, you know, 25%, 30% of our participants in the Capitol Library, you choose it as their home library branch and live in SoCal, so it only makes sense.
And then, Sandra has actually been to every one of our meetings.
Right.
And she's been a regular participant. She lives in the adjacent neighborhood, so.
Yes. You been reading my notes?
Yeah.
They're my two names.
No, I think that the size is what we were first talking about, and I normally would say that smaller is better. But if the recommendation is nine, I think that that's a great number. It puts us in a position for two. And I don't, I don't have a recommendation for names, whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
We don't want to discourage the other two from not participating, though.
No, not at all.
There was a channel that was closer to the process. There was a channel that was closer to the process.
Yeah, I mean, I was... I would certainly like to accommodate applicants who really took the time and bothered to come down and speak to us. They showed sufficient interest. They are obviously very much impacted by the location of the library, living on Francisco Circle. But I also take the comment about it being a regional library and maybe having, you know, maybe one applicant like Ms. Waller, who lives outside the city, but could represent that larger region. And so my inclination would be to, you know, maybe have a ten-member committee. That way, we could accommodate, you know, the two people who have been... arrived at the meeting this evening, plus add Ms. Waller to...
I don't have any strong feelings about what the number is, but I think it's really important for the council, for the mayor or a subcommittee, to interview the people, so you have a sense of what their experience is, what their background is, what they can bring to the committee, because you can't tell from a piece of paper. So I don't think we should be appointing people unless we've actually met them and had, you know, a conversation about what they can bring to the discussion.
Well, I, you know, I have not interviewed the applicants, and so... And I assume that if each of us had our own appointments, I don't know in terms of the process. I generally like... I like to look at their experience and look at their background and look at their written statements, and I'm certainly moved by if they bother to, you know, come and speak to us. And, you know, sometimes I think that that can be more telling than, you know, having a single, you know, half-hour, you know, sit-down with somebody. And so, but that's just a matter of style. I don't... I mean, if the council, if the majority of the council feels that all these applicants need to first be interviewed, then maybe we can continue this item until, you know, that can happen.
Well, we've already... I think we've already put this off twice. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we make this a ten-person committee, that we appoint you Kayser, Sandra Sandoval, and Rebecca Waller.
I'll second that.
There are a second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Not because I don't like any of them, but I haven't met one of them.
Just, it's the matter of process. I understand, Stephanie, yes.
Would you please call Stephanie and talk to her, please? Thank you. Thank you.
She's really very nice.
She's very nice.
So we'll now move on to the consent calendar. These are items that will be handled in a single vote unless a member of the public or council member wishes to pull an item for further discussion or separate vote. Does a member of the public wish to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none, excuse me. Council members?
I'll move consent.
I have one I'd like to pull for a quick discussion, and that's a check register, item B.
Okay. Yeah, and I had also a question on item C. Why don't you go ahead, Dennis?
Okay.
And I don't believe I heard a second to the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, this is... I think it's a question for Jamie, is it looks like the credit card charges are creeping up on us. Can you explain what we're doing?
So we did. That is the largest credit card check that we've had since I've been city manager, and I did look into it at the time, and, you know, I don't recall off the top of my head exactly what it was. Made it clear that was not the expectation. I think what we ended up doing, it was related to some of the work downstairs on the new facility going into Lower Pat Cove. But, you know, that is not... that's not my expectation that it's going to become the pattern, and it certainly stands out to me as well.
Yeah, okay. And I know you're on top of it, so...
Yeah, no, that was... it was something else I caught it to, and we had a conversation about it internally.
Jamie, my question was on item C, the administrative policy to amend the Boards, Commissions, and Committee Guide procedures. And this is on... it's paragraph K, which is a new paragraph on page 58, referring to advisory members, and that if they submit their resignation, it states that once submitted, an email or letter of resignation cannot be withdrawn. I was just wondering what was the reason for that particular new amendment to our guidelines?
Well, I would look to the city clerk, I think, because she put the bulk of the work into preparing this, about why that, once a letter submitted of resignation came about not be withdrawn. Presumably, once a letter of resignation is submitted, the city would, at that point, begin processes to find replacements and start moving down that direction. And so I think the intent behind it probably is just to avoid, you know, going through unnecessary bureaucratic steps associated with it. But I don't know, so if you have anything to add?
That is correct, and that's pretty much standard procedures with other cities when I checked their policies. And I agree with the city manager with regards to any confusion with applicants that do want to apply, and I wouldn't discourage the person that did resign to apply for any positions in the future.
Okay. Well, it's just struck me, it seems like that, you know, I mean, there are a variety of reasons why somebody may submit their resignation, and sometimes circumstances change, and they may change their mind, and seem like it would... And maybe, I understand if it's deep in the process and you're about to appoint their successor, it becomes difficult, but it seems like somewhere along the line, we should be able to accommodate a de-resignation, but I won't make issue of it alone, so...
I think from a practical standpoint, obviously, there would be a lot of discretion in this. I think the point is simply that, you know, in certain positions, from the date that a resignation is received, the city begins to take action, and obviously, it can be difficult to unwind. In many other cases, you're right.
Right.
Relatively little.
Yeah, okay. Well, I hope that we could apply some flexibility and good judgment and common sense to that kind of process. So with that, I'll call the question on the consent calen... consent items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, which brings us to item 10. This is general government, public hearings, and the first item, A, is to consider the approval of a fireworks show on December 16th... Strike that, sorry. October 16th, 2014, in the Capitola Village by the Monti Foundation, and authorize the city manager to issue a special event permit. The recommended action is to approve the fireworks show on that stated date by the Monti Foundation and authorize the city manager to issue a special event permit. So we'll begin with a staff report. Hi, Lisa.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
As you know, the fireworks show on October 16th is what we're recommending. That is a Thursday night in the Capitola Village.
Is that a council night?
No, it isn't.
Oh, good.
I double-checked. So I'll give you a little background information. The Rudolph Monti Foundation is well-known for their annual fireworks show that they have been putting on for 18 years down at Seacliff Beach, and it's a community event that raised millions of dollars for local schools and nonprofits. In 2013, that event was canceled. There was a number of reasons. The model for the raising of the funds, I think it had run its course. The permitting process, the cost, the expense, the CHP, the closure of the freeways and so forth, there was quite a bit of expense, and the state was coming down a lot more on the expense for using the state park. Anyway, the foundation still has this desire to find a way to contribute to local events and to local schools, and they approached the city of Capitola with an idea of, we'd like to raise funds, and we'd like to do a fireworks show in the village, and we have a need to raise funds for the skate park at McGregor. And we thought that was a good melding of two, a community event that would be fun, it would be free to folks. It would not be the same model as the one that was down in Seacliff. It's a completely different fundraising model. The way it would work is that the Monti Foundation would approach the businesses in the village, which they already have begun to do, to talk about, to see where the... Measure the temperature there, see how they feel. What they would do is charge a surcharge for that day, whether it's a hotel room, a restaurant, a drinks, a clothing, whatever it might be, and that surcharge would then go as the donation or the fundraising mechanism for the skate park. So the idea is, you know, very similar to the fireworks show we did for the 60th. This is a one-time proposal for just this event only, just like the 60th anniversary, where we did the fireworks show on a Wednesday night. At that particular event, which was very successful, we didn't do a number of street closures.
And it also takes, as you know, Mark, the amount of real estate involved for laying all the fireworks out. It's not just somebody setting a rocket out and holding a match to it. It's pretty involved. So great, thank you. Those are my questions. I have no more questions.
So just to let you know, I've walked all those places, and I understand what you're saying, and don't forget, we were firing from an old wooden wharf at the cement ship, and we never had any problems. Really, the decision... So I use a firework company out of New York. They're very, very busy right now. They've got like 20 shows that they're doing this weekend. He promised me he'd fly out afterwards, and I'll walk around with the police chief and the fire chief or whoever, and we can examine the best place. I heard about the fish. I'm very aware of the business owner out there, and I don't want to close his business either. So I'm open to all, and that's, you know, that is something we can come back and discuss. That has to be on our permit when we go to the Coastal Commission as well.
Who do you use for pyrotechnics?
It's...
Zambelli.
Zambelli's.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
So, and also, I'm very proud of our 19-year, so 18-years at Seacliff. Last year, I did it in Lake Tahoe in Carnelian Bay off a barge. You know, 19 years, we've never had anyone hurt, any mishaps, any fires. Even at the old event, also no arrests inside the event. So I'm very proud of our record, and that's something that I bring with the show. It's... you're getting a professional firework person here, and I want to keep it safe. I don't want to see any injury, and I don't want to see any problems in the city either. So, because I understand that that's a bad, you know, for the foundation as well. It's been a very positive thing up to, you know, up to the 20 years.
Yeah.
So... And I'd answer any questions you guys have. It's... I've got a very positive response in the village. All the business owners seem very excited. They all did say, why a Thursday night? And I told them what we had discussed about, you know, maybe it'd be more local if we did it Thursday night. They all said, we're not going to raise as much money. So I'll leave that up, like I said in the paper. I'll do it Thursday, I'll do it Friday, I'll do it Sunday. But I do understand, we will raise more money for the skate park and for the schools. So I pledged X amount of the pot to the skateboard park, and I also pledged the in-excess, which hopefully there'll be, to the SoCal Capitola schools. So the more we make, the more the schools get after our pledge to the skateboard park. So I think a Friday or Saturday night would be the best and create that atmosphere we had, you know, before, without all the stuff we did. You know, that's... I think, you know, Capitola is just conducive to this, to having a fireworks show. You guys, that bay is just excellent. So I'll leave it up to your wisdom to choose the day. I'll back whatever you guys choose, okay? And if you have any questions for me at all? Yes?
Thank you, Mark. Yes, Dennis.
Mark, your guarantee is $50,000 towards...
Either way, I'll raise that money either... You know what? And I was just telling Lisa, I'll help you guys raise the money even if we don't do the fireworks show. That's how committed I am. I've always wanted to do a skateboard park. I think the Aptos Capitola kids need a park to skate at, and I'm behind it 100%. So I will help you guys one way or the other, but it's a nice fit with the fireworks show.
Thank you.
Okay?
Is there a representative from the BIA here?
I see one member of the BIA here. Don't look behind you. Don't look behind you.
Has the BIA, you know, discussed the contact?
I was just going to say that we didn't hear about it before our last meeting. We just met like two weeks ago, so we actually haven't had an opportunity to discuss it. I know, I've talked to a couple of people, for the most part, positive about it. Again, the, you know, few of the people who've been here in the past when we've had problems with fireworks have expressed concerns about the neighborhoods and the impact on the neighborhoods. But I think the businesses are not worried about it. You know, I don't think... again, yeah, on the weekend, we'd make more money to be able to donate. So, but on the weekend, you're going to have more problems. So, you know, I... The most of the negative I actually got was from people who lived here and lived through the old days of the fireworks. So the BIA hasn't met. We... I talked to Mark and said that, you know, we would have a meeting, have him have a meeting as soon as possible to discuss it further. That's it.
All right, thank you.
I got another question from Mark, if I could.
Yes.
Mark, is there any way to promote this event without doing a mass publication over the hill? Can you do just...
You know, I would love to just keep it with... So the, you know, the businesses that are going to do the donation thing per drink and all that, and it sounds pretty much, you know, I've gotten pretty much all positive feedback. We can definitely keep it local by as easy as just, soon as we get the okay and I can get moving on the posters. You know, we post posters in all the businesses and keep it to our local papers, and I'm fine with that. What will happen if it stays an annual event, that's where I think it'll grow. I think the first year, we kind of get a free pass, because people won't really, from over the hill, won't really know about it. I had a lot of... you'd be surprised how many people followed our show to Tahoe, because they love our show that we did, when they heard through the grapevine on our website, actually. You know, so I have my built-in followers from over the hill that check our website, and that'll be posted, but I don't think that's the numbers we're talking about. I'm very, you know, we worked really hard for the Seacliff neighbors, the first couple of years, you know, it's a trial and error thing, but I think our final formula, you know, the last, let's say, the last eight or nine years, that included when I brought in those big bands in the LA contingent, I mean, we had a lot of people down there, and we had very few problems in the neighborhood, and I'm very happy to say that was because of the planning with the police departments. And I'm already, Rudy and I have already been talking and, you know, spitballing ideas about how to keep the streets, you know, safe, and that's part of the closures. I mean, people always look at closures as a negative, but sometimes the closures really help keep them safe and the problems, you know, away. So, but that's something, that's an ongoing project as far as I'm concerned. I would be surprised if we had any major issues the first year, I would be shocked.
Mark, what is your estimate of how many viewers we would have?
We'll have between eight and ten thousand, I would say.
That's on a Thursday?
Yeah, well, I'd say that number probably drops to about six on a Thursday. That's a high estimate, we could have as low as five. And then on the weekend, I'd be shocked the first year if we had more than ten. And that includes beach, cliff, you know, everyone's going to walk above the cliffs, and just, you know, all those neighbors are all going to walk from their homes and stand up there and watch the fireworks show. So, ten, you know, ten thousand, that includes the beach and everything, restaurants, the whole nine yards. I mean, our biggest year, we probably had well over twenty-five thousand at Seacliff. There's no way we're going to ever, it'll take five years for it to get to that size.
And you're not talking about any other kinds of attractions, performances?
I'm over, I'm over that.
Okay.
So, you guys, I'm so over that. I'm so over shutting beaches down and having rock bands from LA with movie stars, I am so over that, I just want to do a fireworks show that everybody can enjoy.
Chief, I was wondering, I mean, now, you know, hearing those numbers about, you know, potential visitors and impacts in the village and the neighborhoods, are you confident that we can control that, that there really won't be any major issues? I mean, it seems like ten thousand is probably what we get on a warm sunny holiday, I mean, this coming weekend, there's probably going to be, you know, that many numbers of persons here, so.
The biggest concern that we want to address is traffic flow, and managing the traffic flow and the vehicle traffic, because we, what we don't want to have happen is, once the show starts, you're going to have people who cannot find parking, who will just stop their car in the middle of the road, and when you block both directions of travel, you have problems where fire and paramedics and police cannot access areas where they need to get. And then, once the show's over, when people are stopped like that, then you have pedestrians walking in between cars that are trying to move. And so, I think working together, we're going to develop a plan that we can at least accommodate that type of traffic flow, so people can get in and out without much of a problem, and then we won't have that large circulation of traffic that it gets stuck and comes into a gridlock, and so that's our concern.
You know, and from the staff report, it looked like there was kind of special focus or attention being put on Depot Hill, to the exclusion of maybe some of the other neighborhoods. But I just want to assure that, you know, all the neighborhoods are going to get sufficient, assuming that this was approved, attention, and...
The concern on Depot Hill, as mentioned in the staff report, there's one entrance and one exit to get in and out of there, and to block one of those areas, which is different and unique from other areas of the city, would be a significant problem, especially with the hillside, there will be a lot of people up there, and so, the best way to do that is try and reduce that by allowing residential traffic only for a period of time. And I've talked to a couple of people up there, and they understood that and were appreciative of that. And again, primarily, it's more access in and out for emergency vehicles, in the event something happened up there, so, that if it gets so impacted, then you don't have that blockage right at that one focal point.
Okay, thank you. Does other council members have questions for the chief?
I do, just a quick question, you then feel confident that we would be able to manage this event?
I believe so, yes, as it's presented.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, do you think we could also incorporate places, you know, streets like Prospect and portions of the Jewel Box in the patrol enclosure, because I see Prospect as being one of those spots that will fill up bumper to bumper?
Yeah, and actually, I was driving up there today with Lisa Murphy, we went and looked around there. The nice thing about it is there, Wharf Road will be, coming down near the top of the hill will be closed.
Oh.
Because we don't want to back that up.
Okay.
And as you start to back that up, you know, we're going to have traffic flow moving in different directions. So, we're going to evaluate that as to how the traffic flow will work there, depending on the timeframe, how we want to, we would close it or alter routes as minimal as possible.
And for as short a time as possible, I'm sure.
Exactly.
Yeah, good.
The key is to have it, all the roads open five minutes before the show is over, so that as people are leaving, they can get in their cars and move freely.
Wonderful.
It would not be, it's not a situation where we'd be closing it for hours on end, that's for sure.
Good.
Okay, any other question? Yes, Dennis?
So, it appears, and judging it from when we had the birthday party, that the major viewing areas are from the bluff areas on Depot Hill, Prospect, and the esplanade itself. Esplanade was enormously crowded in that area. Would it make sense to close the esplanade down a few hours prior to that and keep that traffic off there for pedestrian use?
We would close it for a period of time, but we would also be cognizant that we still want to keep people down in the village so that they can go to the restaurants to help support the foundation as to what they're trying to do. We would also add some portion, partial closures along Park Avenue, so people don't pull up on the sidewalk to stop and watch the show.
But once, once traffic was down in that village, and there were two hours prior to it, nobody's leaving.
That's correct. Well, they could leave, they just couldn't drive in.
Yeah, so, all I'm saying is, is that it may be wise to close the esplanade down and make that a people area from viewing for, and you could get six times the number of people down there that you could, if you put the automobile, your trade-off is automobile space, because it's going to be deadlocked anyway.
That is in our...
There's no way in or out of that.
That is part of our plan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? I've seen, actually, I'm going to see if any other members of the public would like to address the council on this item.
Hi, my name's Tori Del Favre, and I live here in Capitola, and I like skate parks, and I like fireworks, and I like our schools, so this is a really fun item. I just have a small consideration that I'd like the council to think about. Since this is a new fundraising model, and we have a guarantee that was lovely for fifty thousand dollars for the skate park, but we're also trying to have some overflow money go to the SoCal Union Elementary School District, and I would like to also get SoCal High in the fold. I would like an opportunity for the schools to have maybe some real estate to do some fundraising. I know that SoCal High has a mean kettle corn machine, and that our schools do have some opportunities to come down in the village and do some fundraising, and I really don't think it'll take away from the meat of getting people into our local businesses, but I'd like to have some serious discussions with the SoCal High Fund and with the home and school clubs at our local schools, to make sure that they have an opportunity to come out and enjoy all these people with pocketbooks that are touring our lovely community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tori.
I just have a question about the fundraising also, and how that's going to work, is anyone familiar with that?
You know, I spoke to a few folks, Zach Friend, one of them, sort of got together with me, and it's, it seems a little fuzzy, but in my comments, I was going to include the fact that, you know, the skate park is, for me, secondary, believe it or not, in the whole discussion, and perpetuating this particular event in our community is of the most importance to me, and making Capitola its home is even better. You know, the amount of good that the Monti Foundation has done is incalculable, although I'll put six million dollars on it, I think that was the total so far.
So, I can answer that question, because we used this formula in Tahoe last year. It's really easy, is the restaurants put a dollar donation on every drink the day of the fireworks, and a five dollar donation on every plate of food, and I, you know, and I'm familiar with a lot of the owners, and the computer, their computers that they have, so it's basically just a button they hit, and, you know, so it's easy for them to tally at the end of the day. And we did this at one restaurant in the bay where I did the fireworks in Tahoe, and we raised twenty thousand dollars in one restaurant just the day of. I've already gotten like seven yeses that they're on board, so I'm just in my mind saying, okay, hopefully, we get the same, you know, same turnout, seven times twenty is a hundred and forty, so, that, but I mean, that's using that number. Obviously, the restaurant owners have to worry about people complaining, we did not get one complaint the whole day in Tahoe, and one way they do that is, we put it on the poster that's hanging in the restaurant, they attach it to the menus, so there's no surprise. I mean, people get upset when they get surprised. So, basically, anyone walking in Capitola that day that goes into a restaurant, they'll know walking in, they're making a dollar per drink, and if you really think about it, you know, let's say even a pretty good drinker drinks ten drinks, they're making a ten dollar donation, right? So, it's not a heck of a lot of money for one person, but then you hopefully get a lot of people, and that adds up. That's one part of the donation, the other thing is, I go out and I just ask for flat donations, and I already have my team of sponsors together, and they're killing me, because I'm saying I want to do this show, the show in Tahoe is already done, voted, I'm doing that show too, so I'm trying to convince, you know, I got to go, my job is to go out and find sponsors now in two communities, and I really, you know, everyone loves fireworks, and everybody, I make sure that, you know, you guys will get the best show you've ever seen, that's my job. And you, I want to make it so people will come back and say, next year, we'll even sponsor more, and that has been our formula, and it has worked, so.
Mark, can I ask you, I mean, the request that we just heard from the SoCal Union trustee about having, you know, I guess, augmented or supplemental abilities to raise funds, do you feel that that will fit in to your model?
Absolutely.
Will it, so you can, you'll work with them to...
Absolutely, I mean, it makes sense, but like I said, you asked me, do I want to get into it, and I said, no. If the schools want to come in and do, you know, one more time, or, I mean, I could, I'll meet with them too and tell them what the best, so in my mind, when she was saying that, there was certain stuff that you could walk around and sell, that just knocked it out of the park every time. So, I can tell her what it was, what those things were, and if they do that, yeah, they'll raise, you know, they'll raise a couple grand, you know, each entity.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that's a lot of money for the schools these days.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and potential...
I have a question, yes, yes.
Since we're fortunate to have the fire chief in room, I'd just like to hear from him about his views on this event, if he'd be willing to share those.
Good evening, Mayor Tori, council members. I think it's a wonderful, out-of-the-box idea, actually. Many of the suggestions that I would have are pretty much in the weeds for the planning process, and I have confidence in Lisa and Chief Escalante's planning procedures. We spent some time with Aptos, the Selva Fire District, that has years of experience with the Monti Foundation, it was all very favorable in the feedback, the only nuance would be is that, being that it's a state beach, it was the State Farm Marshal's Office that regulated the permitting and the process, and depending upon the choice of venue, you're going to have two roads to pick, whether it's a barge or on the wharf or on land, and that would drive that process for the city during the course of the planning process. But on behalf of the fire district, recognizing that this is about skateboard parks and for the schools, you know, I'm pretty supportive of the notion that our board would waive, you know, any of our permit fees or any of the support. When you bring ten thousand people into the village, which is common just about every year, we seem to find needs to put paramedics on electric bikes and find additional ways to migrate through the crowds to support that event, and we'll be there for the city to support that.
Preference, barge or wharf?
Well, my preference would be the barge, because then you're dealing with the National Marine Sanctuary, and the permitting process would go through, most likely, the city of Santa Cruz or the Port District, because it's where you load the barge, it's the regulatory authority. If you put it on land, then that falls back on the city fire code, which would involve us and the city in the process, so, the least amount of work for me is put it out at sea, but...
I was thinking about a safety issue, not a paperwork.
I would suggest, though, being that the wharf is a little bit showing its age, the relationship with the lifeguard service in Santa Cruz, they do have a fireboat that you could probably reach out to and schedule to have on duty in the bay. You know, I wasn't thinking about concussion on fish and fish tanks, but debris does, especially lower ground burst and things, you could affect other sailboats, you could affect the wharf, you could affect the structures on the wharf, and of course, there'd be some associated liability with any of those bad moments. And so, in that planning process, you know, maybe reaching out to the city, you know, having their boat on standby might be a good benefit for this event.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, Max. Yes, Ron?
I know you closed the public portion, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Sure, come on then.
I apologize, I sat there and thought about it for a long time. Many of you know that I have been a proponent of fireworks for years, can tell you why fireworks stopped on the third of July. It was Prospect Avenue, and I hope our Rudy doesn't leave his car door open so that the mic cord gets cut, because that was the end of fireworks in Capitola. Having said that, the wharf is in much better shape than it was back in the fifties and sixties, when we had fireworks every year on the third. The idea of additional firefighting suppression with the fireboat that's now in the upper harbor at Santa Cruz is a great idea by the fire chief. My personal feeling is that I love fireworks. I would like to know, Mayor, you announced at the start of the meeting that there were seven emails with regards to this item, and these weren't the professionals that have come before me, nor the school district that came before me, were they regular citizens, and what were their comments? It's nice as an audience member to know, but I encourage you to have a safe and sane fireworks, and I think it can be done in Capitola on any day of the week, and I'll leave those comments right there.
Right, thank you, Ron. And to accommodate your request, I will go through the emails that we've received and give you just a summary of the statements and comments. The first one is from Supervisor Zach Friend, requesting that we grant the permit. The next one is from Emily and Rick Martin, Capitola residents, and they are in support of the fireworks. The next one was, is from Sean Tutman, a Capitola resident, and he is in support of the fireworks. The next one is from Kristy Hedlin, a Capitola resident, and she is in support of the fireworks. The next one is from Mick Ruth, who is a Capitola resident and a planning commissioner, and he raises very, I think, cogent questions and concerns about having the fireworks once again, he certainly remembers when they were here before, and he asks questions such as, you know, where will ten thousand visitors park? Why was Depot Hill given special consideration? Why not the Jewel Box? And which also raises a question of Prospect Heights. Can the village accommodate ten thousand people? The, he has questions about, because he's familiar with the Monti event that was in Seacliff, will it have all the other entertainment food booths? I think we've answered that concern. How would the beach be controlled? Who's responsible for the cleanup afterwards? And there were, he was also asking about how tickets will be sold, I think we've answered that concern, that's not the model that we're speaking of, and Mick just asked that we give serious consideration to all his concerns, and legitimate points. The next one is from Molly Grassley, who is a Capitola resident, and she supports the fireworks by the Monti Foundation, and the next one is from Marie Martorella, and she's... And, and she states that she cannot support the fireworks, but most of her concerns have to do with the placement of the skateboard park at McGregor property because of the perceived unsafe travel to get to that particular location. She also raises concerns about having fireworks during a, a drought, a time of drought. And also concerns about the Coastal Commission approving the permit. And the final one is from Tricia Proctor, who is a Capitola resident. And she says she cannot support the fireworks. And, but again, it, it seems that she has concerns about the location of McGregor Drive as the, as the skate park because of the dangers of, of getting there. And so it's, I think, issues there about the, the location of the skate park, not necessarily the fireworks show in and of itself. So those were the comments that we had here. I mean, just to let them, and I did receive many other emails. I'd say most of them were, the majority of them were in support of the fireworks. And there were a few that raised concerns. And, and many of the, and one in particular expressed concerns about the overall numbers of events that we're starting to have in Capitola. I think among a few residents, there is a sense of event fatigue. And so, so that, there was that sentiment as well. So with that, maybe I'll bring it back to us now for further discussion. And I, and I think that, you know, maybe number one, we should decide whether or not we are going to grant the special permit for the fireworks. And then if so, maybe on what evening we would want to see it happen. Who would like to begin?
Well, I could speak, first of all, as one of the organizers of the birthday celebration. We had about that many people on the beach and the Espinade watching our fireworks that night. No issues, no problems. People found places to park, no traffic was backed up. Perfect show. That was also slightly off-season. It was in September, it was at our last concert. It just worked well. So I'm generally in favor, in favor of the, of the Monti Foundation. Again, above and beyond the skateboard park, as much as I'd like to see our skateboard park built, I think it's good to not have, you know, an institution like this fall by the wayside just because of the bureaucracy of the state park and, you know, if you think our bureaucracy is bad. I like the idea that the Monti Foundation will seek the sanctuary and Coastal Commission approval. That's significant and important. And the fact that it's off-season always helps. With regard to the park, the barge, or the wharf, I'll leave that up to the folks. We have to remember that it's not just for the length of time that the fireworks are ignited that the wharf businesses are closed, it's for a full day before. It takes a significant amount of time to set something like this up. Therefore, you know, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards the barge, which is an expense, but Upper Espinade Park could probably be a safe place as well. I'm not an expert in fireworks, except trying to set them off when I shouldn't, and I won't speak anymore about that. So I'll leave it to the folks who stop people from shooting them off and deal with the fires that occur after they get shot off, to decide on that. Midweek, weekend in October, I don't think it really matters, and I, I would say the BIA should chime in on that one and, and see how the police, the Monti Foundation and the BIA can work together on it. So in general, I'm very positive about this, and I would speak in favor of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next. Dennis?
As far as the traffic and circulation, I think that has to be real, well-planned, although, you know, we, we look at the wharf to wharf and we look at the Arts and Wine, and we get masses of people, and they do find places to park. It may be possible to actually run our shuttle service during that time. And so, bring the shuttle into the picture. The, I, I support Cory's idea of, Cory's idea of getting some support for local schools, bring it right, right home here, if they can find a way to raise money. And we could possibly contract with Save Our Shores to do all the beach cleanup afterwards. Marty? I, I like the idea of Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, just because fireworks time is nine o'clock at night, and it's over 10, 10:30, 11. It's late for school kids. It's, this is a school event, and you're supporting local schools, it's a good idea to have on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday night. I support the track, the project, and I certainly support the idea that we're going to raise money for a skateboard park that we've had no previous donors on. And so that benefits our kids here too. And it's just not Capitola, it's also Aptos kids that, that benefit from this. So I support this project.
Thank you, Dennis. Next. Tiffany?
I have a lot of concerns because I have been around to see some of the problems in the past. I think it's really important to have it planned out really well. And I'm happy to support it, I'm happy to try it, I'm rather cautious about it, a little bit leery about it, because we do have a hard time handling crowds in such a small area. That's, it's just the geography of it that's our problem, can't do anything about it. So we just are going to have to be really, really careful. And if it works out, fine. If it doesn't, then we have to be prepared to say, no, sorry, it didn't work out, we're not going to do that again.
Yeah, I, I kind of carry some of Stephanie's sentiments. You know, I, I came in concerned, that's why I'm glad I heard from the police chief and the fire chief, who are very reassuring, because the dynamics of this are, it's an evening event as opposed to a daytime event, which we normally have. We deal well with crowds during the day, I'm not sure how it's going to happen at night. I, I agree with Councilman Terminet, I'd rather not see it on the wharf if that's possible. I think the other two locations are my, are my first, second choice. I got a couple of letters from restaurant owners, and even though you said, I think you said seven restaurants had agreed, I got two that did not agree. So I need to, think you need to do some more work on that to make sure you get that, you know, it sounds like you're able to work your magic, so you need to find a way to do that. But all in all, I think, I think we need to give the event a try. It's obvious, if it works out, it's something we would look at over and over again, which is, it seems like that's what you'd like to do. So I, I generally support the event.
All right, thank you, Ed. And, you know, well, there appears to be overwhelming support for granting the permit for this. And, and I just, you know, one, maybe mentioned, you know, I, I remember the days when we had the July 3rd fireworks many, many years ago. And I also remember the problems and issues that they caused. And I was disappointed when those were terminated, but I certainly understood why. You know, when we then scheduled the birthday celebration fireworks in 2009, there was certainly, I had a lot of concerns because of the memories of the, the prior July 3rd fireworks. But I have to tell you that, that 2009 evening, that was one of the most stellar evenings in Capitola that I, I can ever remember. It was just a beautiful evening, there was really a, a great and manageable crowd that was there. It, it was just a stunning celebration. The fireworks were wonderful. Thank you, Mike. It's, it was one of the most memorable times that I've spent in Capitola. Now, I don't want to fantasize the thing that we could always recreate that, but, you know, if we don't make an effort and try, you know, you never can. So I know that this will be a burden for some, but I think for the vast majority of citizens and, you know, and most of them who have written and support the event, you know, we know, I mean, our kids like fireworks, and I think most of the residents like fireworks. This is a wonderful, creative partnership, Mark, that you've developed here with the businesses, with the schools, and helping us develop the skateboard park. I think that we have to make an effort to see if we can carry this off successfully. I think I agree with you, Stephanie, we need to be cautious. I'm certainly not agreeing to this as an ongoing event. I do want to be aware of event fatigue among some of the residents here and being mindful of that as well. So, but let's, I also, I mean, on all the little issues, I think I'd just soon leave it up to the experts and professionals to develop and organize and design the, the fireworks and, and the, you know, the ancillary things around it so that it comes off the best that it possibly can. So with that, I support this as well. And so do we have a motion?
So move. Staff.
Second. There's a motion as second to approve the staff recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just a small denim to it that we leave it to staff and the organizers to make a decision as to what night of the week it'll be.
That was going to be my question, do the council want to make the determination or you want?
No, we're, I think we're, I believe the motion was to leave it to the folks organizing.
In working with the BIA, working with the school district to make the determination of when would be the best evening, I think your hearing is that we don't have opposition to it being a weekend. But, you know, I, I think we're just not being directive about that one way or the other. So it's, that's my understanding of, of, you know, our position, so, okay.
An additional denim, could we add to that not to use the wharf as part of the?
No, I don't want to give, take that away.
Yeah.
You want to leave the wharf as an option?
Because we've always done it from the wharf.
If the fire chief thinks that it can happen right on the wharf, then I'll defer to the fire people.
We can fire from the other side, but then I'd have to meet with your guys. When I walked out there, we'd have to cut back some stuff for me to feel comfortable firing from the, you know, that area next to Andy's place. So, I mean, that's fine, we could do it, but there's some stuff that I would like to see done, and I don't know how conducive you guys would be.
No, we leave it to them, because if they can, I'm sure we can, if we, if we can get the fireboat, I know the chief's going to ask for the fireboat. It's just, it's going to happen. So let's leave it to the folks who know what they're doing.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to call for the question one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mark, and thank you, thank you very much for bringing this to Capitola. So now this will bring us to item 10B, which is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 8.07 of the Capitola Municipal Code, which is the reduction of single-use plastic and paper carryout bags to change the thickness requirement of plastic reusable bags. This is the first reading of an ordinance amendment. So staff report?
Good evening, council. If you recall, back in January, when we were reviewing the, the fee as a proposal of the plastic bag ordinance, there was a request to come back and do, bring before you some research about the thickness of the plastic bags, because there's an issue that was identified that the allowable amount of thickness of the bag was being abused. So let me go through a little bit of some information for you. So what we're recommending is to amend the municipal code to change the definition of the non-woven plastic reusable bag to those of a thickness of four milliliters or greater. Why we should use a single use plastic bags is just. And it was here this evening. Oh, okay. Has done a survey and has found that shoppers are not reusing these bags, they're not bringing them back. So the, the goal is to, to increase the thickness of the bags to four milliliters to, to give them sort of a reuse method. And the thing is those guys don't look like they're reusable sides. This is the 2.25 milliliter, which is a regular bag. These are being handed out, and, and they look like a regular bag. And I'm hoping my representative here brought the four-milliliter bag, thank you.
Can we, can we have that brought up to the council so we can fondle the bags?
Yeah, of course.
I'm a bad guy. I want the big, I want the, the big one. What is that, what is that bag that the person in the audience is holding?
You know, he just told me it was 2.25, and I was hoping they were going to bring me the four-milliliter.
Did I see the 2.25?
I just, you have it.
It doesn't, can I see the one that's out there, please?
I have a whole slew of samples that we went and got for you to look at, actually.
All right, a bag of bags.
Right, so there's all different, these are all supposed to meet the requirements of the minimum of 2.25. A four-mill is pretty much closer to like what you do at Trader Joe's.
These are all 2.25?
Do you want to use the microphone?
Here.
Here, press them down.
The four-milliliter, he's right, the Trader Joe's bags, those are more like the four-milliliter. Obviously, it's double, it's double the thickness of these, which are all 2.25.
Right. And they're giving them away?
And they're giving them away.
Okay.
Instead of providing, in the old days, right, is the paper bag.
Do we have any idea how much they cost?
No, well, they're giving them away, they're not costing anybody anything.
Right, but no, but they cost the store something, that's why.
Well, whatever, this stuff's in the store. I'm just trying to get a read on what we're trying to ban and what we want to reuse.
These are all 2.25 varieties.
These are all 2.25, which is allowable in our ordinance today. And the issue that Save Our Shores and has brought to our attention is that they don't, they're not observing shoppers reusing these bags, which is the intention. And so the, the desire is to increase the thickness, double it basically, to the four-milliliters. And that's, that is definitely, that would trigger in your mind, this is a reusable bag that I'm going to keep in my car and use with my groceries and so forth.
But these will last forever.
Mr. Mayor? How do we know that?
I, I have a question regarding the, the problem we're trying to solve. I understand the single-use plastic bag that we've banned, its ingestion by sea life, you know, significantly thinner than this. Are we seeing the same kind of ocean litter with this type of bag that we were with the others? And I'm just trying not to overreact.
I understand.
But I want to be stable, so I'm trying to get a feel for that.
So the answer to that question, I don't know that that research is out there, to tell you the truth. I don't know if Save Our Shores has done that analysis to see what's out there, whereas it was very prevalent, the thin plastic bags, right?
Undeniably, undeniably.
Yeah. So I think the, one of the goals we're after is the reusable aspect. Use, reuse your bags and not purchase new ones. And so that's the intention for the four-milliliters. And so when you guys, when the council directed me to look into this, the, the city of Watsonville was in the process of adopting this, and, and the request was find out what they did and bring it back. And so they have adopted it. The city of Santa Cruz and the county have not, and at this time, it's not on their agenda to adopt it either.
Watsonville has adopted the four-milliliter?
They did.
Or millimeter, sorry.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Let me, let me add one thing to this, is that the reason these came into existence was to skirt the ordinance.
Correct.
That's why they're out there now. That's why they're there.
So the question on that, Dennis, is can a four-milliliter be made to mimic this type of product?
They can still, the four-millimeter would be legal if you went to that and you give us up.
Trader Joe's uses them.
At that size, they really become reusable because of thickness, that's the purpose.
But would they be? I, I guess, I wonder whether we're just getting into bag creep. We say it, you know, we said it was 2.54, they made them 2.55. We say it's 4.0 now, they're going to make them 4.1. We say it's 4.5, they're going to make it 4.8, and on, and on, and on. When does this stop?
Well, let me go back to Sam and say that once you become, you go to the four-millimeter, you are, you are thick enough where it is gonna become a reusable bag. Yes, there's no four-millimeter that way. But it's thick enough where you would not more than likely throw it away that you'd be reusing it. And here's what's happening, is regardless of whether we approve this or not, it's gonna be passed as a state ordinance, the whole statewide. So it will come into existence this year.
At 2.25, it will.
We're just ahead of the curve here, is what it is.
This, right, I don't know if you heard that, the state ordinance that's coming is, which has made its way out of the committee, is 2.25.
Do we have a sense of how many merchants in Capitola are flaunting the ordinance by, oh, good. And as a follow-up, and I'm gonna post my follow-up, is staff prepared to now do a second round of education and enforcement?
Of course, if the council directs me to, I will be prepared to do that.
Thank you.
So we did, actually do a retail store survey just recently in the past two weeks. And we surveyed 78 stores. We did the Capitola Mall, we did the Village, and we did the area around Capitola Mall and Claire Street. Of those 78 stores, 14 had the plastic bags, 59 had actually switched to paper bags. Three of the stores were carrying both plastic and paper, and two did not offer any bags at all. We also did a restaurant survey as well, since that's something we'd like for you to consider banning plastic in those. We surveyed 55 restaurants. 20 of those had plastic bags, 23 had paper. Seven carried both bags and five did not offer any bags at all. And there were some variations. Some of the restaurants, I mean, some of the retail stores still had some of the thin bags that they were trying to get rid of, which I'm not sure what the timeframe is on that. Some people switched to a biodegradable, thin, plastic bag, which I don't think is ordinance compliant. So I have that information, which I can provide as well. But yeah, like she said, the idea is that we want to encourage people to reuse bags. And we did a survey in Watsonville, which I believe it was only seven of about 740 people that we saw that brought back this type of bag to reuse. So that's an insignificant number of people doing that. Most people that have a Trader Joe's type bag, which is closer to the four-mill thickness, are reusing those bags on a regular basis. So we're just trying to discourage the use of this bag. These bags are pretty much a single-use bag. They're just a little bit thicker. And they're going into the waste stream, they're going to the landfill and filling them up. And so we're just trying to discourage that type of use.
But shouldn't we be encouraging the reuse of them? Because people are getting them in stores, and then what are they gonna do with them? Wouldn't it be better to encourage them that this is a reusable bag?
We should, we should. And when the state law comes, if it passes this year, there is specific requirements on the bags that have to be met in order, the bag has to have a message saying it is a reusable bag. There's certain type of language that has to be included, which I don't think is on these bags at this point. Some of them do say that they are reusable. This one says it has a certain amount of recycled content, 100% recyclable, but it doesn't convey the message of reusability. And especially like the small ultra bags or these tiny bags, that doesn't tell me that I could reuse it most of the time. So we're just trying to get people to reuse their bags. And Watsonville did pass their ordinance because they did have such a low number of people coming back to stores with those types of bags, and they did go to 4.0. If 4.0 you think might be something difficult, then I would recommend putting a 25-cent fee on those bags to discourage people taking those bags. It's, right now grocery stores, I think, are where people really think, oh, I'm gonna take my bags and use them. But when they go shopping in the mall, there's a little bit of a disconnect there about bringing their bags and that type of shopping situation.
Okay, any further questions on the staff report? Okay, I'm gonna see, are there members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Yes, Ron.
You know, I've been reading a lot about plastic bags, and it appears that the state, as Dennis says, is going to come up with a standard for plastic bags. It's certainly not four-mill, it's 2.5 is what they're talking about now, which is basically what you have. What really bothers me about this conversation is the single-use plastic bag. I must have 50 dogs walk through my neighborhood every morning, and most of their owners use a plastic bag. And it's, a lot of them have store names on it, kinda like the ultra bag there because that's the perfect size. And they pick up their dog droppings, they may not bring them back to the store to buy something new, but they're certainly not a single-use plastic bag. The other thing that I notice a great deal, and boy me, I'm not for plastic bags in the waste stream, is that when you go into a grocery store and you wait for somebody in the checkout line, especially in grocery stores, and somebody, the clerk says, well, that'll be 25 cents for each bag, you see the people trying to bundle everything in their hands and not buying the bag at 25 cents. And if you don't believe me, go sit, or I'll take you because I have a handicap sticker and I'll sit with you in front of Save Mart up in the Owl Center up there. Most of you probably don't even realize, in front of the Owl Center, they have a bag collection area for plastic bags that you do not want to put into the landfill because they're not biodegradable. And you will not believe the amount of people that are conforming. I think less and less of these old plastic bags that were not biodegradable are getting out of the mainstream. I think I agree with Sam, the idea of size creep on the metric system or the mil system, how thick things are will just keep creeping up. Want to make one final comment, and that is with food purchases, to-go items in restaurants in Capitola. My wife and I are senior citizens, and a lot of times we do not eat at home, and so we shop out. They aren't necessarily always fast food restaurants. I would just like to say that the compliance with regards to using the non-plastic plates, the non-plastic drinking cups, and the rest of it is outstanding in the Capitola and Santa Cruz community. And one of the things that I've really noticed in the nicer restaurants that I won't call fast food is that there is no 25-cent charge for a paper bag. And they're encouraging people to take paper bags because they're afraid of handling a bag that you brought from home that may have E. coli or something else on it that would contaminate the food that's coming out of their kitchen. Because as you know, in finer restaurants, they don't have an area in which they bag your food. It's usually done at the table and stuff like that. So I just wanted to throw all these things out. I think we can go way too far, put the staff on researching what we're getting in the future. But I would encourage you to wait for the 2.5 mill bags that come from the state and go with the state. Everybody be on the same ball field. I'd like to see personally all the merchants in Capitola, and I think they do more business, to be honest with you. Get rid of the 25-cent charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Art, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, staff, food service is exempt from our ordinance, is it not?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I wanted a follow-up question. The staff report, we're being asked to redefine the plastic reusable bag as being four mils or greater. But what is the staff recommendation concerning the bags, the plastic bags that are below that? Do they go into a 25-cent point-of-sale category?
No, they're banned.
Or do they go into the banned category?
They're still banned.
They will be banned?
Oh.
They will become banned?
They will become banned, the 2.25.
So that's what the recommendation is? Okay. Okay, thank you. So any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, what's the will of the council? Yes, Dennis?
First of all, addressing the 25-cent issue, there are a number of cities that don't have the 25-cent charge, and they get about a 10 to 15% compliance. It doesn't work unless you have a 25-cent charge on it. And you go, you go over to, we've taken surveys through Save Our Shores, and right now, the large grocery stores are getting somewhere in the range of 89% complacency of people that are bringing their own bags. That's huge. And that's happened within the time of our ordinance. And in fact, that's something that's commendable to both as a community being aware of the plastic problem, but also how an ordinance does work things in some type of social change. The reason that this is before us tonight is because we made a mistake when we passed the ordinance. We didn't, we didn't think of anybody trying to find ways to skirt the system. The four-mill came about because the fact that there's a minimal amount in our ordinance that did not suffice in taking the plastic bags out. Remember, we're only talking about takeout bags. We're not talking about packaging in your produce department or the doggy bags. Those are whole different things. So what we're doing here is we're fixing the portion of our ordinance that brings it into complacency. And what it's doing is it's asking those stores that have the thinner bags, they have a choice. They can go to a thicker bag or encourage people to take, to take a thicker bag that works as a reusable bag. And that's what we're asking to do tonight. And I'm gonna make a motion to approve a staff recommendation on this.
I'll second that motion.
Could the motion have the clarification that bags below four mils would be banned?
That's the intent, the leniency.
I just want to make sure that it's explicitly stated. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah?
I just want to add to Dennis's comments. You know, I don't necessarily want to say the word, "we made a mistake." I think when this came before us and we made this tough decision, the intent was we wanted to get these out of the, out of the, out of our waterways and every place they were ending up. And the intent never was to charge people 25 cents, although the belief was the city was all along getting the money. The intent was to make a behavior modification to start using reusable bags, and that still is the intent, is what we want. The goal of this project was to use a reusable bag and get in that habit. And because the system, which it does, circumvented that by creating an anomaly bag that fits in between, I think our logical course is to get to the level of our bag which meets what we consider reusable. And that is, I still don't want people's quarter, and I want to use the reusable bag. And so that's why I second that motion and I support this four-mill measure.
Yeah, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the motion. I understand where we need to go with it. I think we're losing sight of the oldest and most famous of bags, which is the shopping bag. The paper one, I'm talking about Macy's, you know, little, little kind of handles made of twine or whatever it is. And yet, we're, they've always cost a quarter. Out of that little machine, you put the quarter in, you pull the bag out. I don't know that we should focus so much on the mils, the plastic bags, because I understand the mayor's point where we're gonna go to four mils, and guarantee you in two years, we're gonna be sitting here talking about how bad four-mill bags are. So I'm trying to get my head around if it's truly a problem. And I guess the waste stream is really where the problem is. It's not necessarily what's getting out into the ocean. It's what's going into the merf. And, you know, two-and-a-half-mill bag can gum things up. And they're not, people don't have a tendency to reuse it. So rather than make this too complex an ordinance and fashion, some engineering, I'm gonna go along with it, see what it goes, how it goes.
Thank you. Yes, Stephanie?
This is gonna be one of those topics we're gonna be talking about over and over and over again for a while, just because it's gonna evolve. And, you know, this is one of those things you can't get it right the first time because the law is gonna change and use will change and practice will change and so forth. So, but it's really exciting because we're dealing with it and it's going in the right direction. So that, you know, that's the really nice thing about this, is that we're really dealing with it. And whenever I can, I buy biodegradable garbage bags. They make a wonderful present for someone. They might think you're kind of strange. But it just feels so good to use biodegradable garbage bags in your house. And because you just know that, that's just, you know, better product, better things to do.
I would appreciate that as a gift, Stephanie.
And yes, we would think you were strange, but that's okay. We still take it.
And I'm gonna support the motion as well. I have a certain concern that when the state gets into this, we may be preempted as well as on the size of the bags as well. But until that time, I think the more that we can push for fully reusable, the use of reusable, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle. I think that should be the mantra, and this moves us in that direction. So with that, I'll call the vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to item 10C, which is a consideration of a contract with Gene Bergman Associates, an amount not to exceed $10,000 for a public opinion poll. The recommended action is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Gene Bergman and Associates in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for a public opinion poll. I feel like I'm repeating myself. So with that, let's have a staff report.
We have a relatively short presentation for you this evening. This is, several times you've considered this in the past. This would be a small poll to poll city residents about how the city is doing providing some of its basic services, repeating some questions that we've asked in the past to sort of monitor those results over time. Some questions about library needs and usage as we prepare to locate and design the Capitola Branch Library. A few questions about stormwater runoff, which we're required to do under our stormwater permit. And lastly, we've talked about putting the city treasure on the next ballot. Try and get a feeling from the voters whether or not that's something they might be interested in considering. So the contract is for $10,000. Gene Bergman's a local surveyor, lives here in Aptos, and does, has done a lot of work for other jurisdictions in this area. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Yes, Mike?
As I understand it, the mandated stormwater poll is the vehicle we're using to answer some other questions. So we need to do the stormwater poll regardless. Yeah, our stormwater permit includes requirements for us to check in with residents on a periodic basis about how aware they are of where stormwater goes and its impacts on our ocean and marine ecosystems.
Thank you.
Well, I was just trying to think if there was anything, you know, we don't do these polls very often. Is there anything else that we want to know about? And I couldn't really think of anything that was a real burning topic for us.
Fireworks.
Whether or not to have fireworks?
Oh, Sam.
So anyway, anyway, this would be a great time to ask people about something if we wanted to because we're not gonna be doing this for a while. And so if there's anything else that we, you know, not about taxes, not about the schools, summer recreation?
Couple of years ago, we did a poll of general, you know, view of the city government.
We should talk about Lightning Highway 1, Dennis?
The RTC do that. They spend, they have plenty of money.
Well, we've never, let's ask Capitolans. Let's ask what they think.
We do plan to repeat some of the questions that we've asked a couple of times in the past just to get, you know, how is the city doing in providing, you know, some of the basic services? Because it's nice to be able to track those over time and see whether, you know, are the results changing? Are the results of the city doing things better or worse? Are there other changes that are influencing it? But, so it is nice to ask those questions. It's a good opportunity to ask yourself if there's something else we should be focused on because, you know, they're not that expensive, but given the size of our jurisdiction, they're relatively expensive. Because for whatever reason, no matter how big your jurisdiction is, it seems that you get statistically valid results with about 250 to 300 polls.
Do we want to ask him to ask an open-ended question at the end, such as, is there anything else you'd like the city to work on? Anything else you'd like the city to do for you? Is it, you might talk to him about that, see if it's worth, worth it, just to throw it out there. Just, we might hear something that we were really surprised about. We were glad we heard about it.
So it takes a vote of the public to actually raise TOT tax to 11%? Be worthwhile putting a question on the ballot, whether they would support that?
That could precipitate half a dozen questions, which would impact the cost of the poll. I mean, you'd have to kind of bring somebody along, because I would guarantee that, you know, 60% of the population of Capitola doesn't know what TOT is or where it comes from.
How many questions you intend to have on the poll?
So the proposal that we have is for a time, a 10-minute poll. That's sort of the way these things get billed and contracted for. And Councilmember Termini is correct, and that's sort of the standard format for this stuff, is you first ask the question, you know, would you support increasing the transient occupancy tax to 11%? And, you know, transient occupancy tax is paid by people that stay in hotel rooms. And then you'd say, people that have supported this in the past argue the following. And you'd sort of outline the arguments that someone might hear and say, people who haven't supported this will say, you know, negative things about it. And then you ask again, because you want to kind of get a feeling for when the information starts to get out there. So there is a little bit of time it takes. If you wanted to get the TOT into this, I think we might have to bump the time a little bit and ask for a little bit more money just because it isn't as easy as would you support increasing the TOT if you want to get good results.
Are we too late to put this on the ballot for November?
So the ballot, this timeline, so the reason why, this is the last meeting that you you could approve this contract and put something on the ballot in November and get the results before you had to make the decision. I've worked back from it, but what will happen is, the results will be in the hand of the Finance Advisory Committee, and we wanted to get it to the Finance Advisory Committee to give you a recommendation about the treasure. And then we have the July meetings to make the final decisions about putting something on the November ballot. So you'll have the Finance Committee's recommendation regarding the treasure, and that first or second meeting is the last opportunity to put out the treasure or anything else on the ballot for November.
I wouldn't mind paying Bergman another $2,000 if I knew the public opinion on a TOT raise. I think that's a good question to ask, particularly if we're even considering putting it on November ballot. Otherwise, we're waiting, we'll be three years away.
The attachment that you have on here where it shows a question about TOT, that's part of a previous survey, is it not?
Yeah, those are the results from, the attachment shows the results, I think, from the last survey we did.
Right. And I'm looking at strongly opposed of 47% for the TOT for some unknown reason.
What were the preceding questions, though?
Well, no, they're wordy. They get pretty, well, there's one preceding question regarding explaining what TOT is.
Yeah.
And then, you know, even with other cities considering increasing it, it was still 47% to oppose.
The situation's much different today, because two of the largest jurisdictions adjacent to us have already increased it to 11.
Yeah.
So we're, us in Watseville and Scotts Valley are in the minority.
Did any of you get the call from the pollster last time? Oh, I did.
I declined.
I was, well, I was going to say 10 minutes at the max. You don't want to spend more than that. That's a long time to talk, to spend with somebody you don't know really very well. And so, yeah, 10 minutes is plenty.
Jamie, is it possible for us to actually see the questions?
We asked that last time, and they said no. They don't want any input on the questions. They want, they know what, remember, I asked that question. They said, they have a formula for doing it, they have a way of doing it. They can, they ask it in ways that are the least possibly biased, and the ways that elicit the least possibly biased responses. Because I asked that, because I go, I want to know what they're going to ask. And they said no.
Jamie, give us some examples of questions that'll be on there.
Related to which topic?
You tell me.
Well, for example, one of the, some of the questions about, about the, I'm going back to the last poll, that we would like to replicate, we would like to replicate some of the questions that the city asked, I think, the last time around. I'm trying to see, I'm going to ask you about some issues that people might say might be problems for Capitola residents, ask how serious do you think these are problems? How good is the city doing at taking care of, let me ask you specifically, how would you rate the job the city is being, the job by city officials in taking care of managing the city's budget and finances, planning in the future in an era of reduced city revenue, negotiating fair and affordable pay benefits? So those are some of the, some of the questions we've asked in the past that we'd like to ask in the same way as before, because we've got a couple of years of data to track. Some of the questions, I think, about the library, the structure that we've imagined is a little bit like, the city is under contract to build a library. How important are the, is the adjacency, how important would it be that the new library is next to things like, and then list off? And the answer, a whole bunch of stuff. And the answers would be from very important to somewhat important to not important. The questions about the treasure, again, is going to be the format we discussed before, where it's, you know, would you, the city has an elected treasurer. Would you support making it appointed? Then we'd outline the argument pro and con a little bit and see if it changes people's opinions. So each one of the questions has a fair amount of work that goes into developing them. The pollster, Gene Bergman, is, he's real good at that. It's what he does for a living. He's a super smart guy, and he's done a lot of polls. And it is a better idea, Stephanie's right, to take a couple steps back from the actual development of the questions themselves.
But if there's an.
Well, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we would develop the questions, but it seems like we should be able to see the questions.
I agree.
We may feel that the way the question is developed may have some biases built into it.
Well, if you wanted to do that, the only opportunity that we could do the poll and get the results back, we can't bring it back to a council meeting. We could appoint a subcommittee if you'd like to look at the questions. Certainly, for most of these questions, we already have the questions we've asked previously about how city services are, so you want to ask it exactly the same as you did it before, because if there was a bias, you'd like to replicate it one way or another.
Sure. That makes sense.
On the treasure, certainly, frankly, my, you know, we would be developing a really cogent argument against it, because I think I would like to at least hear what happens to the voter's opinion if they hear the best possible argument against it, because you don't want to go into these things and find out later you got surprised and lost. So I'm not sure the, everyone wants a neutral result.
Now, I'd like to speak in favor of just letting the pollster know what information we want and let them fashion the questions and not get too closely involved. And just having been involved in many library polls, city polls, school district polls, especially with Bergman, you can believe what he comes back with. It's spooky.
Yeah, I mean, that's generally the format, is we sort of give them the format, after they come back with the questions and you say.
He asks you, what do you want to know? We want to know whether the citizens of Capitola would prefer a treasurer, elected, or appointed. And then step back, because he'll start by asking that question, then educate the callee, then ask the question again. And we'll see exactly what we want to know after that.
I'd still be kind of curious to see whether they would recommend or allow an open-ended question. They may say, no, we don't do that, we don't do that, we don't want to do that. But just to see what everybody's thinking, if there's anything else that people have on their mind, because they're not asked very often. When they are asked, people say, wait a minute, I know there's something. Oh, yes, it was that, you know.
They can do that.
And, you know, I'd be just curious to ask him whether we could do that, just to give us a little more information.
It's been done. It's been done.
The only, from my standpoint, the pressing one here is getting information back prior to the election, because tonight's the last time to authorize a contract and get the results back, to have them at your desk when you're faced with the decision about putting something on the ballot.
Well, I'm ready to make the motion, don't worry.
Okay.
Before we do that, let's, any member of the public wish to address the council on this? See none?
With staff recommendation? Second.
Discussion.
All right. Go, Dennis.
I'll support that, if we put a question there, is a question or two relating to whether a public would support an increase in the TOT tax to 11%.
And that's been, that's actually been done before, so we have the verbiage and the questions. So it certainly wouldn't hurt hearing about it, even if it costs us an extra thousand or two. That's an acceptable amendment to the motion by the motion maker.
Okay. And to clarify, then, let's, can we go up to a, potentially a 12,000 budget, just in case?
Yes.
The 2,000, I think, to do that.
Yes.
Okay, any further comments on the motion? All right, we'll have a vote. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. I'm not going to support the motion, but Stephanie?
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Terminy?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
No.
Motion passes 41, which will bring us to item 10D, which is the zoning ordinance work plan. The recommended action is for the city council to accept the staff report and provide direction.
Hello, Rich.
Thanks for waiting around this evening.
It's been my pleasure. Good evening, Mayor Story and council members. I'm before you this evening to present the zoning ordinance update work plan and to seek your direction regarding the proposed core principles of the effort, the process, and schedule. So just a little bit of background, as you're aware, the city council considered the general plan at its last meeting on May 8th and directed staff to return with a revised general plan. We intend to do that at your meeting on June 26th. Following adoption of the general plan, we intend to turn our focus towards updating a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. The last time the city of Capitola updated its zoning ordinance was in 1975, so it's been 40 years since we've done a comprehensive update. But we have done numerous amendments in that time, which have been uncoordinated and have left us with an ordinance which is often inconsistent and confusing, not only for the public, but decision makers and staff to use. So our goal is to bring it up to date, make it more consistent and user-friendly. So for the zoning ordinance update effort, we did try to outline some core principles that we aim to achieve through the process. The first is to make it clear, concise, and comprehensive. Overall, we want to make it easy for everybody to understand. We want it written in plain English with a logical organization. We'd like to use more tables, graphics, and illustrations to reduce the wordiness, simplify and refine regulations and procedures, and then also provide a comprehensive list of definitions, use types, and standards, so that when we get more of a modern application, the code speaks to it and we know how to handle it. We also want the code to be consistent with the general plan, to complement it, and as well be consistent with current legal standards. To do that, we're going to use compatible nomenclature with the general plan. Currently, our general plan and zoning ordinance use a lot of different language as it relates to land uses and regulations. We also want consistent use regulations. And then we want to add features in it consistent with the general plan, like the new sustainability provisions and additional neighborhood protections. The new zoning ordinance, we're going to want to tailor to continue to promote high-quality design in the city. Through that effort, we'd want to retain the design review process that we have today, although perhaps we'd modify it a bit. And we'd also want to provide more detailed development standards and design criteria to increase predictability and certainty in the process. The zoning ordinance, a key function of it is to protect neighborhood character. One of the things that's odd about our current zoning ordinance is that it has considerations for decision makers rather than actual findings. So we'd like to change those to findings, so that when the planning commissioner, city council considers a project, they have to affirm that the project would be compatible and harmonious with surrounding land uses. And also to consider the Balkan scale of surrounding development and the use characteristics of a proposal, to make sure that they could be developed in harmony with existing neighborhoods. Another thing that we'd like to do is consider neighborhood-specific development standards. For instance, right now, in the R1 district throughout the city, each neighborhood has the same development standards, whether it's in Riverview Terrace or Cliffwood Heights, irrespective of its lot size. We think that there probably could be some customization to better fit some of these neighborhoods and their unique development patterns. We'd also retain the residential and transient rental overlay zones that we have today to continue to provide neighborhood protections through those methods. Sustainability is going to be something that we really want to improve in the zoning ordinance, and again, consistent with the general plan. As you're aware, we have a number of overlay zones intended to protect environmental resources. We have retained those. We look at updating our green building chapter. I don't know what happened here. There you go.
It wasn't sustainable.
Yeah, it was. It didn't sustain very well. So we'd look to update our green building chapter, as you may be aware. Title 24 has really caught up with our green building ordinance. So we'd look at ways maybe to push the envelope a little bit and make it more sustainable. We'd also want to encourage sustainable development by removing current obstacles in the code to doing things like providing solar, renewable energy source, providing incentives where we can, whether it be by offering byright over-the-counter permits or fee waivers, as the council did several months ago with the green building incentive program. In addition, we'd also want to have new and clarified procedures in the code, examples of that being describing when technical studies would be necessary to study various environmental issues. The general plan had a number of new provisions for historic preservation. We'd want to thread those through the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance describes how you can designate a property as a historic resource, but it gives no standards or procedures for how to treat a historic resource that's proposed to be altered or demolished. So that's something we like to add to the code to give staff better direction and certainly give the public a better understanding of what to expect should they want to alter a historic resource. And we'd also retain the current conditional use permit requirement for any project that did want to alter or demolish a historic feature. We'd want to support economic development with the code. A couple of ideas to do that would be, again, improving clarity and predictability. I think property owners will be much more inclined to go forward with development if they have a better idea of what the process is going to lead them to. We also want to, again, improve our standards and regulations so that there's improved clarity. And then we want to consider opportunities to promote infill, mixed-use, and transit-oriented And then finally, we'd like to facilitate development review, have a greater efficiency in our permit process. Again, clarity and comprehensiveness, I think, helps everybody involved. Ideally, it'd reduce the time and cost that it takes for our customers to process permits. And finally, we'd look at opportunities to streamline the permit process, particularly for some of our more minor routine permit types that currently require discretionary review. There may be opportunities to turn those into ministerial processes that can be approved over the counter. So the work plan, the process that we're looking at is to start off by doing some stakeholder and public outreach. What we would propose to do is have focus group interviews with multiple stakeholder or interest groups. For instance, we might meet with a group of engineers, architects, and planners, and then meet separately with a group of business owners and merchants, and then again with property owners and development interests. Through that process, we would develop a list of issues and options and suggestions for improvement to the code. We would also establish an online public survey that any member of the public could participate in, whether they live in Capitola or not, offer us their feedback and suggestions. One of the things we did here at the planning commission, we presented the work plan, was there was an interest in having planning commissioners or city council members participate in the interviews, perhaps as panelists. Staff would certainly welcome your participation, should the council wish to engage in that Following the stakeholder, while the stakeholder outreach is ongoing, we would present an organization and format proposal about the planning commission and city council. If the council agrees with our work plan, we're prepared to make a presentation of the commission in June and then to the council in July regarding the organization and format of the code. Overall, we just want an intuitive organization and an easy-to-use format to improve the The next step would be to present, through the interview and survey responses, to develop an issues and options white paper. We would bring that to the planning commission, probably sometime in the late summer, for a recommendation, and then to the city council, likely in the fall, for a decision. During that process, we'd be seeking policy direction so that we can make a lot of the key decisions and start drafting a preliminary draft of the zoning ordinance. Once we drafted a preliminary draft zoning ordinance, we would schedule a series of workshops with the planning commission and city council. Those will likely occur in the fall and winter of 14 through 15. We anticipate that it would require at least four workshops with each, the commission and the city council. And again, the commission would be offering recommendations to the councils for their decision. Once we receive all the policy direction through those workshops, we'd prepare a draft zoning ordinance and a sequoia document, which would be released for public review and comment. Following the public review and comment period, we'd prepare responses to comments and then make revisions to the documents. Once the public review period was over, we made final revisions. We'd again present it to the planning commission and the city council, make any final revisions necessary to prepare the documents for city council adoption. As you're aware, our zoning ordinance is a part of our local coastal program, so even after the city council adopts, we still have more work to do. We would have to amend our LCP and work with the coastal commission to work through any issues that they might have before we could have it adopted within the coastal zone. In terms of budget, we do have our existing contract with Placeworks, formerly DCNE. They will continue to work with us to draft the zoning ordinance. City staff's role in the process will be to manage the project and lead the process. We'll facilitate the public participation and outreach process, and we'll complete any of the ordinance revisions as directed by the planning commission and city council. The consultant's role is going to be more to prepare the draft ordinance and to assist staff as we need. We do not anticipate any additional consultant funds to be required to finish the project. In terms of schedule, we're ready to go as soon as the general plan is adopted. We're already starting to do some of the work. Public workshops and the hearing process, public participation will be the largest drivers of the schedule. As proposed, we think we could get the project done in approximately 12 months. That schedule could be condensed if we limit. if we limited the number of hearings and public outreach process. Conversely, it could take longer if we wanted to have more hearings and really get into the weeds with some of the details. This schedule, however, does not include the amount of time it may take to get through the coastal commission. That's a wild card. So our recommendation for you tonight is that the city council accept our staff report and provide direction to staff. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Questions? To the left of me, to the right of me? Yes, Dennis?
Rich, the learning curve on this process is huge, and I could count on one hand the number of people within the city that really understand what this is. And so, is that the meaning for the workshops? Is that the purpose of having workshops at the planning commission level and the city council level to not only give community input, but the learning, the learning conversation? We're so antiquated. We're back in, our zoning ordinance is the 1950s and 1960s. There's a lot of good ideas and people who work within the system out there that can see from the outside what works and what doesn't work from the city, and there's people who sit in the city that can see what they want and don't want in this thing. So how do we mend and find this ordinance that works for a community like ours that, there may be, there may be good examples out there that we don't have to vent the wheel on, that we can, we can take in. What is the process for doing that?
I think you're absolutely right. I mean, nothing we're doing is brand-new. You know, agencies throughout California updating the zoning ordinance, there's a lot of good ideas out there, although each community is a little bit unique, and there's going to be a lot of policy decisions along the way. I think, you know, in terms of, you know, the zoning ordinance is much more technical than the general plan. General plan is much higher, it's policy-driven. Zoning ordinance is where the rubber hits the road. And you're right, I think there is a, there's fewer people out there that have an intimate knowledge of how zoning ordinance and regulations work. I think that doing interviews with some of our stakeholders, the people that come across the counter, pull permits, draw plans, build projects, that will be invaluable. They'll be able to offer us their opinions on what works, what doesn't work, suggestions for how we might improve it. The public workshops, I think, the idea there is that I don't think it's reasonable to think that we could drop off a brand-new zoning ordinance on your lap and get through it in one hearing. The idea is we group sections of the code together and schedule them over several meetings so that we could get through the material in a much more manageable fashion.
I would, I would expect an awful lot from staff and from DCE in this process, more so than the general plan. You know, you work within the system, you see how the system works, and so, and DCE should be knowledgeable, and I expect they are, on that process. And you see the other jurisdictions and how they work and what works and doesn't work. What do you see your involvement in DCE's involvement in this process?
Well, I think, I think we're keenly aware of a lot of the issues that are with the code. I think we'll learn a lot by talking to others that deal with it. DCE writes code for a living, so they're very familiar with, you know, some of the different options that are out there. And at the end of the day, there's going to be a lot of policy decisions. There's going to be issues where, you know, we're going to be able to present you with options, but we're going to need policy direction on which way we should go with it.
And you chose a different path for this than we had with the GPAC committee?
I did. I don't know that a GPAC-type committee would be the best fit for a zoning ordinance, again, because it's very technical in nature. The general plan is more the community's visions and values and quality-of-life kind of statements than how do we regulate setbacks, height, non-conforming structures, and those types of issues.
I'm a little unclear at this point how workshops work with the planning commission or the city council, since we're the, we are the bodies that make, that make the final decision. So is that, how do we build from a workshop level to a decision-making body on that?
I think when we, when we present the material, we would be seeking votes and policy direction on a number of specific issues. Maybe workshop's not the best word, but we'd present, say, three or four chapters of the zoning code to you, highlight a number of issues that we heard through the issues and options process and the interviews, and then ask you for policy direction on those. And through it, certainly, I imagine, council members and planning commissioners will identify other issues that we need to tackle along the way.
Thank you, Rich.
Sure.
All right. Rich, in recent memory, we had an issue where there was miscommunication between the permitting process and the, before the permit, the occupancy permit was issued. Is this process, are the guiding principles here going to address that particular problem that rose?
Yeah, I believe so. I think, you know, improve clarity, more than anything, is going to be probably the biggest benefit we get out of this process. There's going to be policy decisions along the way, but there's many times where we flip through the code and we find inconsistent provisions, and we have to make an interpretation, and frankly, sometimes we're not right. And somebody else who's reasonably minded can look at it and come away with a much different opinion. So we want to make it so that two different people can look at it and generally come away with the same impression.
I was just wondering which of those principles that you had posted up there, I mean, kind of where that, that matter of consistency or if you, accountability, if you want to call it, may come into play. Is that under protect neighborhood character or promote high-quality design? It seemed like there could, should be also another principle about assuring compliance and, or, you know, accountability to the permit, you know, specifications.
Yeah, I mean, I-
And building that into our procedure.
Sure. I, you know, to me, you know, the first one, clear, concise, and comprehensive is probably the foundation of the entire effort, I think.
Clear, concise, comprehensive, and complied with.
Right. Because really what that helps us do is it helps us, you know, understand, administer, and enforce the code.
Yes, okay.
And, you know, no, no, no code in the world is going to protect against somebody that wants to build something different and goes and does that. And I think what our community development director is saying, and this is, this is a problem, having been the community development director here, was this notion that there's a lot of pieces of code where reasonable people can read it differently, and that leads to differing opinions for different people by different planners at different times. And that's, that does create a lot of, understandably, for applicants frustration when they feel like their neighbor got to do something and now they want to and they're told they can't.
Right.
So I think that clarity can really help with the process overall. But at the end of the day, all we can do is have our inspectors trying to catch these things early when people build something different.
Right. But it seemed like scheduling the intersections so they come at key moments, you know, before all of a sudden it's too late, because it seemed like that was the position we found ourselves in. It was too late, and to undo it was an unreasonable burden upon the applicant. And so then that's where you get this skewing away from the original permit specification. So I really hope that we are able to build in during this process these kinds of, I'll call them checks and balances, and making sure that we have compliance. I also wanted to ask another question on the schedule and the chart. It lists the planning commission and city council workshops taking place within the fall and winter of 2014-15. I'm not quite sure when fall's being defined. I consider that September, October, November. You're going to have an election right in the middle of that. Your council members and planning commissioners are going to turn over. I would just, I think, suggest that you plan that for after, I mean, more the winter, when the new council, the new commissioners onboard, so that you don't have to be resetting at some point, so.
Yeah, we share that concern. One of the things that we did talk about is, you know, a bulk of the time is going to be required on the front end of this, doing the issues and options identification, public outreach. And once we finish that process, I think we'll reevaluate where we are in the schedule as it relates to the election schedule and, you know, reevaluate the whole process.
Okay, all right, good. With that, if there are no other council question, oh, yes.
Just a comment when everybody's finished.
Oh, didn't she have a question or a comment, or?
Yeah, I just have a question, Rich, if I could.
Go ahead with the question.
How are we going to deal with this monster called the historic issue? How are we going to deal with that?
Well, there's a number of ways to tackle it. My suggestion would be that we at least tighten up the zoning ordinance provision so that we have a process in place to deal with historic resources. But I think a follow-up to that, at some point, the city should develop a historic preservation program, you know, separate ordinance or guidelines outside of the zoning ordinance to more comprehensively deal with that. It is an action item in the general plan, so if it's adopted, that will go into our work program, and that will just be a matter of scheduling it and getting it done.
You know, we attempted at one time to do that as a community, and the people whose houses were going to be designated historic said no. So you can't, you can't force that. You know, we, we're kind of operating in this vague hole where the city has a historic inventory. The state has SEQA requirements, and at the same time, we don't, in essence, have a historic, historic ordinance in place. Do you see us actually having a historic ordinance in place where, is there a way we can do that without public commitment on properties, or is?
You know, Dennis, we do force that on them when they come in to do anything. I mean, someone can come in here to remodel some portion of their home, and someone decide that, I'm pretty sure that's historic, and all of a sudden, they are truly down the dark, deep rabbit hole. So we do force that on them without a comprehensive list. If we had a listing so someone would know when they owned a house or bought a house or wanted to remodel a house, that they're looking at historic considerations. If it's not on the list, we shouldn't be able to bring it up. It shouldn't be on a whim. It shouldn't be someone has the feeling that it feels pretty historic, or it looks pretty historic, or it's been around for a while. It's, you know, it's just unfair to the residents.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think there is a way. I think, you know, education's a component of it. I think there's a lot of people that fear that if they were on some list, that they could never do anything in their house. That's not necessarily the case. And there are regulations, as you mentioned, like SEQA, which, should you want to demolish, whether it's on a list or not, you're going to have to go through that process, and it's going to be cumbersome if it's found to be historically significant, so.
Even Cliffwood Heights today is under SEQA, over 50 years old.
Right. And, you know, that's a problem that a lot of communities have, you know. Track housing that was built in the 60s now is, you know, potentially historic. Now, when you do the analysis, none of those ever turn out to be historic, but you go through an unnecessary process. So I think there'd be a lot of benefits to developing some kind of standards, guidelines, ordinance, whatever it might be. And again, I think it would improve predictability for everybody involved.
Are we going to have a problem, of course, we don't know at this point, with the coastal commission? Is this going to be, we have to keep that in mind the whole time we're developing this ordinance, that we have to appease the coastal commission on this?
Yeah. You know, it'll be interesting. I mean, it's certainly a concern. It's a risk. You know, they're aware that we're updating our zoning ordinance. There's a lot of things they'd like to see Capitola do that I'm not sure Capitola wants to do, and we'll have to negotiate with them and hopefully reach a meeting of the minds.
That might give us some clarification from then on their parking requirements.
I don't know if we want to get into that if we don't need to, but it'll probably come up anyway.
Yeah, okay. Stephanie?
Just, just, when we get to it, we have, we're going to have a really interesting discussion about non-conforming use, because we have these houses that are too close to the front or the side yard setback or the rear yard setback or on the, they're on a zero-watt line or whatever, they're non-conforming. And they come in and they want a little remodel. And so we give them a little remodel, but we say, well, they're non-conforming. Well, now they're even more non-conforming because they have more. And that's something that we've grappled with, you know, recently, and we really need to have a good discussion about that. Are we going to allow these or not? And because we kind of, it always feels awkward when we, when we have dealt with those, so. Anyway, I encourage all the council members and planning commissioners to go through the book, and if stuff jumps out at you because you think it sounds ridiculous, write it down, write that number down and get that to staff so that we can, we can look at that stuff, because there's a lot of old stuff in there.
Okay. So I think I'm going to ask if any member of the public would like to address the council on this alium, since we have two members of the public still here. Thanks for sticking it out with us. I don't see anyone moving, and so I will bring it back for council further discussion, and the only action is just to accept the report.
Move to accept the report.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further direction? Do we generally like the concept and direction that Rich is going in?
I have real reservations about the workshop issue, but I'm going to go along with it, formulate what to do.
Okay. I assume that, yeah, we will be hearing more about, you know, the specific of this as it moves along. You know, the next portion are going to be the stakeholder interviews and surveys, and assume that the results of those will come back to us?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll use that to develop a white paper and then present it to the council and the planning commission.
Okay, and then we can kind of track it, you know, from that point. Okay, well, let's see. I'll call for the vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, which brings us now, I want to see if, are there any final comments before I move for adjournment? Seeing none, I will adjourn us to the next special budget session, which will be Thursday, May 29th, 2014, 6:00 p.m.